It is Wednesday, April the 19th. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are present. And we'll start with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And we'll now go to department updates. We'll start with Ms. Kelly from the Health Department.
Hello, I'm actually not Lori. She's attending the Local Health Department Managers Association meeting. It's only held once a quarter, so it's very important that she be there for that. So I'm Jamie Ford. I'm the administrative assistant for the Monroe County Health Department. Good morning. I do have several updates for you, though. The White House released an official statement stating that the National COVID-19 Emergency Declaration enacted in March of 2020 will be expiring on May 11th, 2023. COVID-19 vaccines and boosters will still be available for free while supplies last. However, once the federal supply runs out, only those covered under health insurance, both public and private, will have easy access. Those that are uninsured or underinsured may face barriers. Free at-home testing will depend on what health insurance you have. Those under traditional Medicare will no longer receive free at-home tests. Those on Medicaid will have access to free at-home tests until November 2024. Those with private insurance will depend upon the insurance. As a reminder, the Health Department does still have free at-home COVID tests available for the public. You can walk in from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday to receive free at-home tests. On April 18th, 2023, the FDA authorized changes to simplify the use of bivalent COVID vaccines. The monovalent Moderna and Pfizer COVID-19 vaccines are no longer authorized for use. The public health clinic does have bivalent vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment. In response to the recent storms and tornadoes, the Health Department is still working with Indiana Department of Health to provide vital record services and TDEP, or tetanus vaccines, to those affected by the recent tornadoes in the area. We are working to establish these services at the Steinsville School on April 26th during 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. as part of a multi-agency resource event along with the Salvation Army and Red Cross. And then if I could share my screen for a second, we also wanted to show -- we also wanted to show a recent update. If I can move this. My apologies, I've never actually done this before, so we're trying something out.
You're good, Ms. Ford.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so you can see the screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is our main Health Department webpage. And because, since I've started working here, I've learned that there is always something to be aware of in terms of public health. So we were trying to make it easier for the public to see several different resources in one spot at the same time. So if you go to our main Health Department webpage and click on this Public Health Information site, this will take you to a site that is built using our ESRI ArcGIS technology that the county has access to. And if you scroll down, you'll see everything from COVID-19, we have MRSA, the Candida rhes, which is the fungus that we've been tracking. The CDC also has information on it. All of this is in one spot that you can see. And then here, this is actually the Indiana dashboard. So you can see Monroe County statistics, you can see the state as a whole. Or if you also wanted to go to see the COVID wastewater surveillance, you can click on that and easily find that information there. So like I said, we were just trying to make it a little bit easier for people to find all the information that they're looking for at once, instead of having to go try to find several different websites. So if you just scroll down here, we also have the new information from the FDA about the COVID vaccines. That's been linked here. Like I said, MRSA. And then this is also, this is an emergent threat that was just declared, I believe, last week about fentanyl mixed with xylazine. So yeah, we will be updating this, just trying to keep the public aware. And then as we get more information, whether it's about COVID or other emerging threats, we'll add that here. So but like I said, you can find that linked to the Health Department website.
Very good. Questions or comments?
Are you not finished? Okay, keep going. Any questions or anything, Mr. Jones?
No, I'm just, that looks like a really useful change. I think the public will appreciate it.
So the FDA approved COVID bivalent booster shots for adults over 65 and a second round for adults over 65 and immunocompromised this week?
This literally just happened yesterday, so I'll be honest, I'm still learning about it. The information or the press release that the FDA released, it is linked on that one site that I just showed you. I do believe it lists something there. But there is a meeting that's taking place today. I believe the CDC is going to actually issue clinical, the clinical recommendations and stuff, but we won't know those until later today. So this is still very new information, and once we find the details and specifics of that, we'll be able to get that to you.
Great, so something for people to look for in that group, so thank you.
Yes, of course. And if you're always called Health Department, we're willing to field questions as we're able to.
And the vaccines that you're going to be offering out in Steinsville, do people need to register for that, or where can they find more information? Is that also on the same website?
That's a great question. We can release more information with that. I'll be honest, I'm not sure if you have to register. I believe they are trying to focus more on the people that were affected by the tornadoes. Yeah, so just everybody just went out there. So as far as that specific effort, I'm not really sure. But we can find out more information and definitely release that either on our website or on our social media.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thanks a lot. And I believe we also have a department update from Christine McAfee. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. It's kind of fun to be back in this building.
I haven't been here forever. I'm looking at the Zoom screen saying, where are you?
I'm actually live in person. It was a really nice day to get out and walk over, so I thought I'd take advantage of it. So hi, good morning. Just a really quick update with JD AI. There you go. You know, we've had these conversations before that oftentimes people like to get together and make decisions that impact the lives of others without inviting those that are impacted to come and join in the conversation. So we're trying to change that with our JD AI work group. We are creating a youth probation advisory board. I use "youth" in air quotes because we're really looking for 18- to 25-year-olds that have had prior experience with our probation department as a juvenile in Monroe County. We'll likely extend it to others who have had probation experience around the state at some point, but we're really focusing on if you've had probation experience in Monroe County right now. We want that 18- to 25-year-old age group because we want their experience to have been relative enough, relevant enough, that what they experience is likely similar to what we're doing now. If people are interested in learning more about that, I would encourage them to contact me. My email address is c mcafee m c a f e e at co.munroe.in.us. The flyer also has that information on there. And if you do the QR code, for those that are tech savvy and know how to do QR codes, which is probably that 18- to 25-year population, that will take you right to our probation website, which will give you more information and also the application to apply.
Excellent. What kind of time commitment can people expect?
We're hoping no more than maybe one or two hours a month. When we start out, it might be a little bit more. Initially, we're going to try and do everything virtually, just because, again, getting back in public spaces is still not super common. We might have to break out into smaller work groups, so I think if somebody could commit to three to five hours a month, that would be probably the extent of, the longer extent of what they would be doing. We're going to work on things. We have been working to revise our conditions of probation. Ever seen our list of probation? It's about 18 things of you shall not, you cannot, and you never will. And we're really trying to make it more meaningful. We're also trying to come up with ways to tailor terms of probation so that not everybody gets everything, because it doesn't apply to everybody. We currently utilize an exit survey when you're released from probation services. We want to know, what would you like us to ask you? We came up with the questions, but we're interested in what is it that young people think that we should have asked? What information do they think would be helpful? And then now what do we do with it? So those are just a couple of ideas of things that we're looking at in the near future.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, this sounds very exciting, and good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's a really, it's a very common practice in many areas, but not so much in the justice system. So we're going to pilot this, we're going to give it a shot. Applications are due by May 12th, and we're very, very excited to see the community response. I know we have a lot of people that are very involved and want to make changes for the positive in our system, so this is a great opportunity. Come see us, let me know.
Definitely. Commissioner Thomas?
No, it's a fabulous idea to hear from folks who have experiences, and they can provide you with the best guidance, so great, great, great idea.
They're the people that will have the insights that can make a difference, so.
Absolutely.
Good.
But you know, what we often talk about in our office is what we're doing isn't really working very well, so maybe we need to try and do it differently. And I think this is really different.
And I know from conferences I've attended, for people that are experiencing substance use disorders, they say nothing about us without us. And so it's the similar, the same kind of philosophy.
I've kind of stolen that and used it oftentimes. And you know, and it makes so much sense. In any of our personal lives, when people make decisions that impact us, it would be really nice to be included in that conversation. Because sometimes what I think the solution is, is not the solution. And then when it doesn't work, oftentimes we sit around and go, well, why didn't it work? Well, because it wasn't going to. So let's figure out how to do it together.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you for coming over.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me to show up in person. Take care.
Thanks. Is there any other department that has an update for us today? Seeing none. We'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Speakers can have up to three minutes. And please state your name and whether or not you are a resident of Monroe County. And I see we have Jim Shelton with us virtually. Good morning, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber. I am a Monroe County resident. This morning, it's that time of year again, I'm speaking on behalf of CASAs, accorded upon its special advocates, because our spring training will start in just about a month. It will run May 22nd through June 14th. It will be Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays evenings from 5:30 to 8:30. Applications will be due just in a few weeks, May 5th. So I want people to know about this. Hopefully, there are people out there who have been thinking about this, and we know they are, and this would be a good time. CASAs, as I'm sure you folks know, are volunteers who work with and advocate for children who are in the court system, not because of anything they did. I'm right now CASA for a month, well, five-week-old infant, but what their parents have failed to do. They have either mostly neglected them or perhaps abused them. And so the court has stepped in, and Judge Harvey has reached out to the CASA office and asked for a volunteer to be assigned to the case. So you would be trained in for about 33 hours and learn what it is to be a CASA, how the laws work in Indiana, who all the different players are, from DCS family case managers to our service providers, et cetera. And then your job's basically to be the eyes and ears of the court and the spokesperson for the child. Judge Yalvin used to say, and I think Judge Harvey agrees, that there's no way they could conduct their courts without CASAs and their insights. So CASAs are neutral, they advocate, their only responsibility is to advocate for the child. They don't have to worry about what's the cost of what services they need, or how hard it is to get them, or any of that. They just advocate for what the child needs. So I invite the public to please think about this. It's a wonderful opportunity to contribute to the community. It's really very satisfying when you work with a child for a year, or children for a year or two, and see them get back into a permanent situation, either because their parents have been able to right their ship, or because the court has decided the best option is for the child to be, or children to be adopted. So please think about it. You can go to monroecountycasas.org, click on the volunteer link, find out a bunch of information. There's a frequently asked question page that will answer a lot of things. Or you can call 333-2272. It'll talk to the staff. When you're assigned a case and you work it, you work it with a CASA staff professional who backs you up, can go to hearings, et cetera, if you aren't able to make one, and then helps you with little weird things that may come up that you didn't learn about in training. So thank you for your opportunity to spread the word.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment this morning? We have Susan Henkel with us. Good morning, Ms. Henkel.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. This is Susan Henkel. I'm with the Women's Commission. I'm a Monroe County resident. I just came to give you guys a little update with what we have been doing. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Thomas for coming to our last meeting, which was wonderful. We have started having people come speak at our meetings to share with us what they've been doing in the community. Last month, we had Annie Aiken with the Community Wellness Coordinator with the Purdue Extension Office. This month, we moved our meetings to the third Thursday, so it's actually tomorrow. We're having Beth White with the Indiana Coalition and Sexual Assault and Human Trafficking to come share with us what they've been doing in the community. This month is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so it's kind of thematic in a way, but I just wanted to let everybody know that that's the kind of things that we're planning on doing with the community, oh, yeah, with information in the community. We are also working with Molly Turner King and Angie Purdy next week to get another year of girls' coding camp off the ground, so just a little update.
Fabulous. Sounds like you've re-energized the group.
Definitely.
Anyone else to speak this morning? Seeing none. Let's go on to approval of the minutes from April 12th.
Move approval of the minutes, April 12th, 2023.
Second.
Any comments or revisions?
No.
I don't have any either, so call for a vote on approval of minutes from April 12th, 2023. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next up, we have approval of the Claims Docket.
I move approval of the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, April 19th, 2023, and Payroll, April 21st, 2023.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cockrell to present information today.
Yes, the Accounts Payable Claims are a total $3,410,420.17. I went through the packet right before. I'm filling in for the orders office. And I would just, the note that I would give is that includes the ARPA funding for the New Hope Project for the childcare. And so I thought that was something that I'd worked on and was pleased to see. The Payroll Docket includes $2,324,074.06.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
I'm glad you mentioned the ARPA project. Thank you.
Yes, especially given the huge need for childcare in our community. Recent statistics suggest that only about half the families who would like to have childcare are able to find what they need here in the community. So I really am happy that we're able to support them. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none. Call for approval of the Claims Docket. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please. Oh, I will note for the record, sorry, that we have a Treasurer's Report from March of 2023. Now, we'll go on to the next item.
I move approval of Resolution 2023-08, Submission of Rural Transit Grant for 2024.
Second.
And Ms. Purdy, are you the one who's presenting?
Actually, both of us. I just forgot if TSD could promote Chris Myers to panelist, but I can get us started.
Thank you.
So this is something that we've been doing for quite some time with Area 10 Rural Transit, and this is a grant application for year 2024. The Monroe County Board of Commissioners are the applicant for these funds and have agreed by resolution, which is included in this packet, 2023-4, to subcontract with Area 10 Rural Transit to actually provide the service. The funds listed in the application have not been awarded, but are the amounts requested from federal and state funds. Rural Transit is requesting a minimum of $66,000 in local match funds from Monroe County Government, and this request will be submitted to the County Council during the 2024 budget process by the Board of Commissioners. There is currently no capital request for the year 2024.
Very well done, Angie. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The only thing I would add for people who don't know is that Rural Transit covers four counties. So it's the public transportation system that covers Monroe County, Owen, Putnam, and Lawrence as well. So the allocation that we have for the 2024 period for operating from FTA, which is through INDOT, is 893,351, and we're expecting probably no change in the state public mass transit funding, which is estimated at $311,595. In order to pull all that down, you know, we have to put in a full budget, as expected, if we were to use all of the FTA INDOT funding. And that total grant would, the total operations would be for $1,865,546. So that includes all of the state and all of the federal money, but then, of course, the big chunk of local that's required in order to operate those funds. We usually do not have sufficient local match in order to operate at that level. And I did submit a spreadsheet that kind of gave you that picture so that you knew how that was all broken down. But we are hoping to, you know, secure the regular funding that we have at a minimum, and certainly would welcome any kind of increase in local match support from any of the four counties. I'm happy to take any questions.
I'll note for the record that that was Chris Myers talking. It shows up on our screen at the top, but not everyone may have access to that. Questions or comments?
No, I'm just glad that we can provide this service.
I'm really happy to support this. And since you're here on a different topic, if I might, I wonder if you could give us an update on the ARPA-funded buses?
The ARPA-funded buses are up and operational, and we have one fully on the road, actually, I think either today or tomorrow in Monroe County. So they're rolling, and we're very, very happy to have them.
Excellent, thank you. Yes. How many of the buses were you actually able to purchase with those funds, just to let the public know?
Five, which is pretty amazing. So we were really happy to get five buses.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on approval of Resolution 2023-08 and Submission of Rural Transit Grant for 2024. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of the Harrowfish, Inc., HVAC System Replacement Proposal, Fund Name Cumulative Capital, Fund Number 1138, and Amount of $19,830.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here to speak with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. Multiple HVAC units at the Currie Building require extensive repair and are no longer able to provide cooling. The age of the units paired with the scope of work required to repair them support replacement. This request is to approve the agreement with Harrowfish, Inc., in the amount of $19,830 to remove and replace HVAC equipment in Systems 1, 10, and the Records Room. The equipment replacement includes System 1 condenser, System 10 condenser, air handler, and 10-kilowatt heat kit. Records Room, condenser, air handler, and 10-kilowatt heat kit.
Very good. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas?
I don't have any questions. I think it just highlights the ongoing work that has to be done in every county building all the time.
All the time.
Yeah. I appreciate that. And I'm, just based on what I read, it appears to be an energy-efficient unit, and that's important for all of us. Thank you.
So this isn't related to this particular thing, but how are things progressing on the caucan and the windows in the Justice Building?
I met with Jason Zare from City Glass, actually, yesterday, and we're exploring a different type of lift than what was originally proposed. I'm hoping that he can locate one that will impact traffic less, and he's going to try to get that information to me soon, and that will help me put together a better plan to send to the city as far as what needs to close, so we can get that work started.
Thank you. Yes. I just wanted folks to know that there was a glitch, basically.
Yeah.
About you're actively working on it.
Yeah, and I don't know that it's a glitch necessarily. I just think that I want to try to close a smaller area, basically. I don't want to be out into the street.
Good. Safer for everyone involved.
Yes.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on the Harrowfish, Inc., HVAC System Replacement Proposal. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Kreider. Next item.
I move approval of Agreement of Graber Post Buildings, Inc., Service Agreement, sorry. Fund Name: County General and Non-Reverting. Fund Numbers: 1,000, 1178, and 1179, not to exceed $30,500.
Second.
And is Ms. Whitmer with us?
She's not. Hey, everybody, this is John Robertson, sitting in for Kelly today.
Morning.
Morning. So this service agreement was approved by our Park Board last month. It's with Graber Post Building. The project is to renovate a caretaker's house at Cars Farm Park. The project would include replacement of the metal roof, the wood siding, the wood soffit, and the gutters. I'm laughing at the description here, but in summary, the exterior of the building is starting to deteriorate, so this project is important to get done. I know our caretaker would very much approve it and be thankful. So the amount is not to exceed $30,500, as mentioned, would come out of our contractual lines. If there are any questions, happy to answer.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, and just pleased that this is being done.
No questions, thank you.
I hope that this will help keep the critters out of the building, because I understand there was a problem with that.
Yeah, we do, too. It most certainly will.
And I know that the Parks Board has been looking at this for a while, so I'm glad that we're able to finally move on it.
Yes.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I call for a vote on the Approval of the Graber Post Buildings, Inc., Service Agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval in Agreement of Bloodsore, Rigor, Cooper, James, Service Agreement. Fund Name: 2017 GO Bond, Fund Number 4810, and Amount Not to Exceed $36,460.
Second.
And I assume you're filling in again, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, me again. So this is actually an addendum to a service agreement that was signed in January of '23 with Bloodsore, Rigor, Cooper, and James to do some work for Phase 2 of the Limestone Greenway. And the original agreement, VS Engineering, was listed to do the Preliminary Engineering Bridge Report. The request is to change from VS Engineering to KB Bridge Engineering for that report. I know this has been discussed with the County Highway Engineer and Bloodsore, Rigor, Cooper, and James. There are no concerns on our end. But that said, if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer. But that said, if there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer. I'll also mention that the price is exactly the same.
Questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas?
No, I don't. He answered the question I had, so thank you.
Yeah.
He's good at anticipating.
He is. Good at anticipating.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. I call for a vote on the Bloods, O'Rigger, Cooper, James Service Agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of Izzy's Rental Service Agreement. Fund name County General and non-reverting, fund numbers 1,001,178 and 1,179, not to exceed $3,000.
Second.
And Mr. Robertson?
Yes, me again. So this service agreement, again, was approved in March with Izzy Rental, not to exceed $3,000. This is to clean our ported toilets in the parks and greenways. The services included would be pumping the toilets, blue water replacement, bleach rinsing, wiping down, and restocking. So our staff is thankful that services like this are available. But there are any other questions, I'm, again, happy to answer.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Thomas?
No questions.
I know that Ms. Whitmer did extensive research to see if there, you know, what companies were available to do that, just provide the service in the area. And we're happy that we have somebody that can clean these facilities as well as do the pumping, so. I told her I was not keen to do it myself, so.
[laughing]
Anyway, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on the Izzy's Rental Service Agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval of a cooperative agreement on Title 4E Cost Recovery for Public Defense Expenses. Fund name Title 4E, fund number 8117.
Second.
And we have Ms. Turner King from the Legal Department to talk to us about this. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So what's before you today is a cooperative agreement between the Indiana Public Defender Commission and the county. What it allows for is reimbursement for public defender services as they relate to child-in-need-of-services cases and termination of parental rights cases. And with this agreement, the county's cost for providing representation in those cases would be fully reimbursed. So it's, oh, the, sorry, the cost would be fully reimbursed under this agreement and another agreement. So under another agreement, the Indiana Public Defender Commission pays 40% of the cost, and under this agreement, it would reimburse the remaining 60%.
Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
No questions. Thank you.
It's, I'm pleased that we're able to get reimbursed, because when we go through the claims on a regular basis, I see charges for guardian ad litem, and so I assume that that's what is going to take care of that.
I think it also takes care of things like depositions in those kinds of cases, or anything related to the representation. Having been a prior public defender who has done those cases, those cases tend to last much longer, and you spend a lot more time doing depositions and attending meetings with DCS and things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Call for a vote on the Cooperative Agreement on Title 4E Cost Recovery for Public Defense Expenses. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
We have no appointments. I've got a list of announcements. Absentee voting is available, but you must have your request for the absentee ballot in to the clerk's office by end of the day tomorrow to be able to vote absentee. You can vote early in person at Election Central, 302 South Walnut Street. They are open weekdays from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and this Saturday and the following Saturday, they will be open from 9:00 till 4:00. On Monday, May 1st, the day before Election Day, they're open from 8:00 until noon. And of course, on Election Day, you would go to your regular polling place if you wish to vote then, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And we urge people to get out and vote in the primaries in both Elletsville and Bloomington. As we heard from Ms. Ford earlier, free COVID-19 testing is still available at the Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th Street, and at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are accepting applications for boards and commissions at co.moneroe.in.us. We continue to hold virtual office hours six times a month, and if you're interested, please go to the calendar, which is on our website. There are blood drives scheduled, again, at IV Tech. Next ones are Thursday, May 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Friday, May 12th, from 1:00 to 6:00. There are also, since you have to wait eight weeks between when you donate, there are drives on Wednesday, June 12th, from 10:00 to 3:00, and Friday, June 16th, from 10:00 to 3:00. Given the tornado we had at the end of March, I urge people to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System. That's for weather and health-related emergencies and updates, and so you can also sign up for that at our website. We have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance in paying for rent or utilities. If you need that help, please contact your township trustee. And finally, renters and homeowners who were affected by the March 31st, April 1st tornado and high winds may apply for FEMA assistance. You can do this via the FEMA app on your smartphone or tablet. You can do it online at disasterassistance.gov, or by calling 800-621-3362. And if you have homeowners or renters insurance, you should apply for that as soon as possible also. The deadline for applying for the FEMA assistance is June 14th, 2023. And again, you can apply at disasterassistance.gov, or initiate things by calling 800-621-3362. Does anyone have any other announcements? Sorry that was so long today, but especially to help the people that were impacted so severely, basically, by the bad weather, wanted to make sure people have the information that they need. We will have a work session, but I'd like first to take sort of a major break before we do that. Any suggestions about when we should come back? It's now 10, almost 10:40. If we come back at what? What do you think?
11:30.
11:30? Does that work for everybody? Okay. We'll see people back here at 11:30. Thank you.